Good evening and welcome to the September 26, 2024 special session of the Mayor and City Council. To begin this meeting, because it is a special session on a off night, usually we need to have a motion, and I'm going to hand it over to Councilmember Wu.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the Mayor and City Council of the City of Gaithersburg conduct a special session on Thursday, September 26, 2024, which is today, solely to take final action on the schematic development plan SDP-9376-2024 and environmental waiver ENV-9737-2024 for the Lake Forest redevelopment and to conduct a public hearing on the Development Rights and Responsibilities Agreement, otherwise known as a DRA for the Lake Forest redevelopment.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. Okay, that carries 5-0. I will note that we're doing this on a Thursday night, having this special session, because it's a compromise with our developer partner, WRS, who was very, who wanted us to take the most aggressive possible timeline to this project, and we could not have a meeting this past Monday as we normally would because of a conference that was going on. So this is the, this is the soonest moment that we can get together and have this policy discussion. I will also note before I hand it over to Greg Mann that we, so we have two, well, we have three items on our agenda tonight. The first two are policy discussion. The record is closed on those, it closed on September 11th. We had a public hearing, we had two work sessions. We had an open record for about three months. We got lots and lots of feedback, and it will no doubt be incorporated in the decision-making and consideration of the City Council here. So once we have our staff presentation, we're going to go right into policy discussion, which is, we're going to talk about where we finally are and how we're going to vote, and then we're going to take a vote. And then we're going to move into our public hearing on the DRA, which, which is part of this, this project, but just sort of an ancillary part. And you'll hear all about that when we get to the public hearing, and that's when the public will have a chance to, to speak on that, because the record is open on that. So for our policy discussions, I'm going to hand it over to Greg Mann, our Acting Director of Planning and Code Administration. Greg?
Thank you, and good evening to everyone. This is a policy discussion for schematic development plan application SDP-9736-2024 and the associated environmental waiver application ENV-9737-2024. As you can see on your screen, the subject property is known as the Lake Forest Mall and is addressed at 701 Russell Avenue. The subject site comprises of 102 acres currently improved for the Lake Forest Mall itself, surface parking spaces, three stormwater management ponds. The property is bounded by Odenhall Avenue to the south, Lost Knife Road to the east, Russell Avenue to the west, and Montgomery Village Avenue to the north. The applicant filed the SDP on February 5, 2024, requesting approval to redevelop the entire Lake Forest Mall property with 1,600 dwelling units, 750,000 square feet of employment uses.
Greg, if you don't mind, just speak up just a little bit.
I apologize, yeah.
Thank you.
250,000 square feet of large format retail and 220,000 square feet of commercial uses. A joint public hearing was held June 17. Comments and questions discussed by the Mayor and City Council on the Planning Commission during the public hearing related to a multitude of topics, including but not limited to parking, signage and streetscape, gap housing, diversity, and phasing. A joint work session was held on July 8 to discuss in more depth the feasibility for the stacked retail with residential above, on-street parking, phasing and potential interim uses, signage and streetscape, sense of place and the civic space. During the work session, comments and questions related to revisions to the design guidelines and enhancements to the sense of place, refinements and changes to blocks E and F, enhancement and activation of open space along Street 1 and options for block C. The Planning Commission reviewed the SDP at their September 4 regular meeting and did recommend approval to the Mayor and City Council. The Mayor and City Council's record closed at 5:00 PM September 11 and includes 199 exhibits. In addition to the revised plans, the record also includes the applicant's response to the comments received during both the joint public hearing and the joint work session. I would also like to just make you aware, the applicant did provide within the record a request to revise some of the proposed conditions that were presented to the Planning Commission. Staff has reviewed the applicant's comments, and while we disagree with the majority of their suggestions, I will note, we did revise condition number 12 based off their comments to clarify the intent. The revisions were made during the Planning Commission's recommendation meeting, so they are reflecting actively, accurately, excuse me, in your packet tonight. As noted in both the preliminary background report and the staff analysis, the associated sketch plan contained four conditions. Upon review of the information provided by the applicant, staff is of the opinion the conditions have been satisfied. But of note, the applicant has revised their letter of support from SHA for the single lies intersection of Montgomery Village Avenue and Street 1. And staff is of the opinion the applicant has satisfied enough of conditions 3 and 4 to support approval of the SDP, but with a new condition or approval that requests the applicant provide additional information as identified in the staff's memo included as exhibit 185 in your packet. In response to the comments received during the joint public hearing and the joint work session, the applicant has redesigned blocks D, E, F, G, and H. Additionally, stacking concepts for block C have been provided to address comments received during the meetings as well. All other blocks remain unchanged from what was presented at the joint public hearing. So as noted, the applicant has provided an illustrative alternative massing option for block C to ensure flexibility and to address comments about the potential inefficiency of the block. The comments, the proposed plan proposes for an alternative design which redistributes the residential density by exposing some of the large format retail facades and relocating the density to other locations, including additional stories. The maximum height of this additional scheme would be capped at seven stories, which is in compliance with the approved sketch plan. In block D, this is the employment block, the applicant has shifted to provide a new linear park between Street 1 and the building frontage. If you can follow my mouse, that is right in this area here. The linear plaza includes a double row of boulevard trees and provides a linkage and transition between blocks B and C to the north and the residential blocks located south of Lake Forest Boulevard extended. In blocks E and F, the previously proposed two-over-two stacked townhouses have been removed, and they've been replaced with two condo buildings. And those locations, again, if you see my mouse, was right here and right here, Straddling Street 5, which is in the middle. And lastly, the gap housing that was previously on blocks E and F have been relocated to blocks G and H. And again, those redesigns occurred in this block here and down here as well. Overall, staff supports the changes to blocks D, E, F, G, and H, and is of the opinion the revised revisions adequately addressed the comments received during the joint public hearing and the joint work session. The applicant has also revised the schematic development plan to incorporate a triplex unit to the overall gap typologies provided. In addition to the new triplex units, the project includes two-over-two and one-and-a-half, one-and-a-half stacked townhouses. Overall, the project includes 454 gap units, which makes up 28.4% of the total units within the project. Again, staff supports the inclusion of the triplex units within the overall mix of gap housing, and is of the opinion this change better aligns with the intent of the Lake Forest Mall master plan. The required off-street parking for the project will be provided through a combination of surface parking lots, structured parking, residential garages and driveways. The parking facilities for the commercial and employment uses within blocks B, C, D, and F will be shared and dispersed throughout these blocks. The applicant has also evaluated providing a minimum of .5 on-street parking spaces per unit within the same block. These on-street spaces are in addition to the required off-street parking requirements. During the joint public hearing, the lack of on-street parking for blocks H, O, P, and N was discussed. In response, the applicant has been able to revise the parking with the inclusion of additional on-street parking spaces along Odenhall Avenue. Despite these revisions, staff does want to note block N still falls significantly short of the desired .5 on-street parking spaces per unit. But with that said, we do support the plan revisions addressing the goal of providing .5 on-street parking spaces throughout the project, and we do believe this addresses the comments that were made during the joint public hearing and the joint work session. The applicant has updated the design guidelines to include expanded details on neighborhood character strategies for the transit center, the replacement of typical residential elevations with precedent immetries, and general graphic updates to align with the SDP changes. The guidelines also now include a new section for skyline features and landmarks, and the applicant has made significant revisions to the signage guidelines. Overall, staff supports the proposed design guidelines, and is of the opinion most of the changes are good. With that said, we do believe additional guidelines should be included to bolster the transit center design. These enhancements should include methods for strengthening the relationship between the transit center and the surrounding buildings, strategies for landscaping and hardscaping, and suggested compatible building materials. Lastly, staff continues to have concerns regarding the proposed signage guidelines with the design within the design guidelines. Overall, staff is of the opinion the changes made are still good, though, for the sign guidelines, but staff does support, does not support the new commercial sign located at the corner of Street 1 and Odenhall. It's our opinion this area is entirely residential, and a commercial sign, it should be excluded from this location. The applicant has also incorporated interim uses for blocks D, E, and F. These interim uses will be implemented upon the completion of block C and are intended to remain until these blocks are fully developed. Staff appreciates and supports the inclusion of interim uses. However, it is important that these interim uses are not retained forever at the expense of the employment development. A strategy for the interim uses should be provided by the applicant at final site plan for block B and/or C. Additional the interim uses must receive approval with temporary use form renewed yearly by the Planning Commission. And then in conclusion, staff has reviewed the revised application materials, plans, and supplemental information. Is of the opinion the applicant has adequately addressed the questions raised by both the Mayor and City Council and the Planning Commission. Again, the Planning Commission has recommended approval of the SDP, and staff also supportive of the plan. Lastly, staff supports tree removal variance and the associated environmental waiver ENV-9737-2024. And just a reminder, we will need two separate motions tonight, one for the SDP and then another one for the environmental waiver. And I am happy to answer the questions you have, and I will let you know we also have from staff tonight Nancy Shum with Environmental Services, Tony Berger with DPW, and Sharon Dis with Economic Development. Should you have any questions for them relating to anything in the packet tonight?
Thank you very much, Greg. Before we get to policy discussion, which I would like to lead off tonight, do we have any questions or comments for Greg on anything that's changed about the application? Not seeing any? Okay, then I'm going to jump into policy discussion. So this is a significant milestone in the history of our city. Lake Forest Mall opened in 1978. At the time, it was the biggest indoor mall in Montgomery County with notable anchor stores JCPenney, Sears, Woodward and Lothrup, and Hex, and lots of smaller ones. It had an ice skating rink on the lower floor. Over the years, it came to be a significant landmark in countless people's lives. You run into so many people even today who had their first job at one of the stores at Lake Forest, or they, they hung out there in their high school years, or took dates to the movie theater that used to be there, or one of the restaurants. And, and while the, the property has always been in the City of Gaithersburg, it, people always saw it as a gateway to Montgomery Village. As time went by, most large indoor malls across the country began to decline, and Lake Forest was no exception to that. The first time I ran for office in Gaithersburg was in 2005, and I was asked what my top priorities were, of course, and, and the potential for redevelopment of Lake Forest was among them. That was 19 years ago, and since that time, it has continued to rise on my priorities list. And I'm not alone. My colleagues here on the council all agree, our staff agrees, and the public agrees. A couple of years ago, when we went through the master plan update for Lake Forest, we received more public feedback and participation on the question of what should be the future of this property than I think we've ever received on a single topic in our city's history, at least that I'm aware of. And of course, some of the importance of Lake Forest derives from the fact that it's located in one of the most heavily trafficked areas of our city and one of the most highly visible. If everything around is our house, you might think of the Lake Forest property as our living room. And not just because of its prominence, that's the first thing when you, when you walk in the door, but as a room that leads to many other places. Which is why this is really a watershed moment for the City of Gaithersburg. Perhaps this is the official start of a new era, and that we will one day tie the rejuvenation of some of the older parts of our community to this process and to this decision tonight. Arguably, the biggest change and impact of the plan is the addition of housing, where there wasn't any housing before. 1,600 units, as Greg said. Multifamily rental, townhouses, condos, there's a lot. There's been a lot of talk in the public square lately about the housing crisis and about the need for affordable units and about innovative strategies like building gap housing. Things like duplexes and triplexes and two-over-twos and such. And well, well, I will point out that while others talk about these things in the abstract, we are bringing them to life here in Gaithersburg, and this project is a perfect example. Furthermore, 15% of all the housing units in this project will be required to be made available for rent and for purchase affordable at the MPDU and workforce levels. That's 240 or so affordable units added to our inventory that were not there before. With this project, we continue to do more than our fair share in providing housing opportunities for our community. From the beginning, when WRS purchased the property and came to the city to start talking about future plans, I have pointed out that the council and I will have one chance in our political lives, and our staff will have one chance in their professional lives to redevelop the Lake Forest property. We cannot settle for a C-level project or even a B-level project. This needs to be a grade A project or an A-plus project if we can get it there. What we will be voting on tonight is not the end of the process, I'll point out. It will continue to go through staff and our Planning Commission review until they get to final site plan. Much of the design and architectural work and other fine tuning is yet to be done. But if we approve the SDP tonight, it is the end of the mayor and council portion of the process on this application, and I'm treating the DRA as a separate matter. So I want to make something very clear before our applicant and to our staff and to the Planning Commission. I believe that through this process, working together with the public, this plan, with this plan, we have set the table for a grade A project and potentially an A-plus project. It is up to our applicant, our staff and our planning commissioners to make sure that at this point, we do not settle for anything less than high-quality architecture, design guidelines, materials and finishes, that we follow all the best practices at every turn. No cutting corners, no settling. This is our opportunity. This is our moment to fundamentally rejuvenate a part of our city that has needed it for decades. So I say, let's do great things here, and not good things and not okay things. I'm talking about, let's do great things. With that emphatic admonition, I will tell you that if the mayor in our system of government had a vote in this good old system, I would vote tonight to support this application. And assuming that our council is on board to approve this schematic development plan, I want to thank and congratulate our developer partner, WRS, and their whole team and their partners. I want to congratulate our staff, who have led us through this process with great professionalism and put in so much work through negotiations, through master plan rewrite, countless meetings guiding the applicant's team through the process and helping us get to this moment. And I want to thank and congratulate every member of the public who has participated in this process, and there were literally thousands. Our job here, our job here is to balance the interests of the city, its residents and stakeholders, with the interests of the property owner. And I think that together, as a governing body and as a community, we have done that, and I'm proud of it. And I know I speak for our, my council colleagues tonight when I say that we are excited, we are hopeful, and we are truly honored to be part of this moment in Gaithersburg history. So if I could just say, everyone, please give yourselves a big round of applause. So who would like to go next?
Is there anything left to say?
It's totally up to you. We'll go to Rob.
Go that way. So, Mr. Mayor, I echo what you said. I'll just say, congratulations to staff and to our developer partner, WRS, on what has been a model process from start to finish. I know at some points, it may not have seemed that way, but I appreciate all of the diligence staff has put into this and all the responsiveness that WRS has put into this. I'll support.
Thank you, Rob. We'll go to Neil.
So this has been a long time coming, but, and, I mean, I wasn't a part of the council when some of the other major development projects in the city were put together, like Crown, like Kentlands, like Parklands, and some of the other major developments. But the process on those, from everything I've seen in the record, has been very thorough, and this probably took that up a notch. As the mayor said, we had countless meetings between the city staff and the developer. We had an immense amount of public input. Some of it was in agreement with every detail, some of it quibbled with some points, but I think we got to the point where we, we ended up with a master plan, and the developer has come back with a schematic development plan that is really going to do a lot of good for the city. I'd like to point out, one of the thing, one of the things we were looking at in this project was as something that would catalyze additional economic development and growth in this part of the city, and we've already started to see other parties come to us with proposals for neighboring properties. So I'm very happy with the way this has gone. I wish it didn't take this long, but these things have to. And I'm looking forward to the next step, so I support this moving forward as well.
Thank you, Neil. Lisa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been full of nostalgia as I think about Lake Forest Mall. I was 11 years old when Lake Forest Mall opened, and it was the place where I learned to ice skate. Many of the things that the mayor talked about, where, you know, we didn't just go there to shop. We, we, we met, the community met there. We went there to, with rival, rival football teams to, to give each other dirty looks. My friends and I would walk the mall for hours, trying to get the attention of the boy that we liked. And it just was a place where we went to the movies there, and it was a place of community. It was a hub for the community. And it was, you know, when we first decided that we were going to redevelop on that land, I get a lot of phone calls and, and conversations with folks that I grew up with who wanted to know, oh, my gosh, what are we going to do with Lake Forest Mall? And just the sadness of that history being torn down until we started this project, and they saw what it was going to become. And we see this new sense of community, and the frowns turned into smiles. And folks are now excited about what's to come for Lake Forest Mall. People have lived here all their lives. It is, it was integrated with the applicant, with the staff, with mayor and council, with the community that just kept showing up every time. I see youth in the room, which is incredible. Asbury is here, which is incredible. You wouldn't let us off the hook to get this right, and you should have. You should have held our feet to the fire. So we are going to come up, we are going to come, I am excited about what we are going to come forward with. So I want to thank everyone who participated in this, and even those who gave us good thoughts and supports to get us to where we are. I've, I've been looking forward to tonight for a while, so, so I, I do support this.
Thank you, Lisa. We'll go to Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I want to associate myself with my colleagues' comments. I first took my oldest to see Santa Claus at Lake Forest when we first moved here, and, you know, it, it has always been that place of community. And one of the big reasons I'm even sitting up here is knowing that the future of Lake Forest is going to be in the balance and wanting to make sure that the, that the east side of the city had a voice up here and felt like you were being heard. And, and I think the entire council has done a wonderful job in, in hearing the feedback. And I think the applicant has done a really good job of listening and being engaged and working with staff. And I echo the, the comments of the mayor to congratulate everybody who is a participant in this process. Sometimes you get to see how the sausage is made, and sometimes it is a challenge. I, I was quite vocal through this process about the need to develop that sense of place that the master plan called for. And it took some, some zheng, to use a technical term, but I think we've gotten there. As I was going through the packet for this and, and looking at the changes and, and the feedback that you had gotten at the, the public hearings and the changes that you made, adding, extending the, the park along Street 1, adding the, the vertical street walls, I started to get excited as I was reading through this packet. And it was the first time, honestly, in going through that I smiled. And I'm like, yes, we've gotten there. Is it perfect? No, of course it's not. There's still some work that can be done. Is, are we all going to get everything that we wanted to get? No. But considering where we started, considering what is there now, considering the opportunities that we have to bring in new housing, to bring in jobs, which is one of the important things that the master plan calls for, this is an exciting, exciting opportunity. I went through, and I'm not going to go through all the notes. I do want to say that I agree with staff, that I think it would be a mistake to put a commercial sign at Odenhall and, and Street 1 through the neighborhood. Just knowing the way that the traffic is going to be flowing, there are main roads on either side. There's no need to bring that through the neighborhood. You can bring them in off of Russell or off of Lost Knife. So I, I agree with staff's recommendations that there should not be a commercial sign there. I do begrudgingly approve the, the tree waiver as well. I hate taking down mature trees. But, I mean, just even looking at the, the picture that is currently displayed on the monitors here, the amount of tree cover that will be added to this property compared to the sea of asphalt that we have now will be an enormous net improvement for the city. You know, we have to go through these findings to make sure that it, it meets all of these things, and it's like, you know, yes, 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 yes. Particularly, you know, the public good and meeting the, the goals of the zone. This is needed on the east side of the city. It's needed for the city as a whole. I enthusiastically support this, and I will echo the mayor's request. Let's not value engineer out the beautiful stuff. Let's not cut corners. Let's make sure that this is the crown jewel of Gaithersburg going forward. But I am excited and will be supporting the application.
Thank you, Jim. We'll go to Jamil.
What's left to say? Two quick things. What stands between you and a vote, so I'll be very brief. Lake Forest is very personal. My wife had her first job at Lake Forest. When I ran for office, the whole Lake Forest redevelopment was a big reason of that. I had a whole section in my campaign video of Legos and Lake Forest being demolished. So like, Councilmember Harris and I are looking forward to getting on the bulldozers when that happens. I'm super excited to see this move forward, and I strongly support.
Okay. Well, with that, we have two motions. The first one is the resolution that's on page 6 of the packet. Greg, do you know what packet page the conditions are on?
I'll find it for you. Bear with me one second.
We have it, but I just can't remember what page it's on.
It's one of the 1,729 pages.
No, no, I see. It's package page 10. Okay. So if someone wants to move the resolution on page 6 with the conditions as listed on page 10 and 11.
So moved.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor. It seemed evident from the packet. I don't know if it still remains. Is there a point of disagreement between the applicant and Planning Commission on any of the recommended conditions?
They submitted a letter for the record where they, as Greg alluded to, they didn't like condition number 6, they didn't like the condition with the sign. So.
Okay, so those remain, just wanted to confirm, those remain points of contention between the city and the applicant, or the, sorry, the Planning Commission and the applicant?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm assuming that they do. Yeah, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we got two seconds. That was actually at exactly the same time. Good luck, Lea, decoding that one.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to make an amendment to be considered prior to the motion as written.
Okay. Make your motion.
Move to approve the resolution as amended, striking requirement number six of the planning commission's recommendations found in page 10.
Do we have a second?
I'll take it.
Okay. Do we have any discussion on this?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Yeah. So, I found it interesting, and I do have a question for staff. Is, what happens when we get to final site plan and there is contrary information in the packet with respect to the financial viability of the proposed project, proposed elements on Block C? Do we come back? Do we come back here?
Well, the council always has the authority to relook at a condition of approval. So, the staff does have the authority and the ability to bring it back to you if we need it to. But the way the condition is drafted, though, it does allow the city staff and the applicant to come to a mutual agreement on additional information that could be used in lieu of some of the information that's already included in the memo that staff has asked for. So, there is an avenue where we could work together with the applicant on maybe something different, and I don't know what that is, right? But to work with them to try it again, come up with some different information, right, that would satisfy what staff has been asking for, based off, again, the condition that was included on the sketch plan. Again, from our opinion, we don't believe that condition's been fully satisfied. We do see this as a win-win, though, right? We do believe this allows the applicant to continue to move forward with the project, and allows them additional time to work with staff with clearly guidelines on what the additional information is that we're asking for.
So, let's hypothet, if you'll indulge me on a hypothetical, worst-case scenario, the requirement for financial analysis is there, WRS conducts it, it shows that, you know, despite them sinking hundreds of million dollars into Block C, it is financially unviable. It'll be a block of cement for here to eternity. What do we do then if that's what the financial analysis says?
Nothing under the way the condition's drafted. We've only asked for the information. We're not looking to approve anything that's being provided to us.
So, the analysis...
I can actually invite Sharon Disk up here as well to maybe help answer some of your questions.
She's elated to come out here.
While Sharon's coming, just to be clear, final site plan would likely be approved before hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars would be spent.
Well, we're talking about the result. My understanding is we're not talking actuality. We are talking about a tool that will be in place. So, if the condition is approved, then assume that applicant will put it in place prior to file a site plan, which means it'll be something that planning commission would then consider. But what I'm trying to hone in on here is what is that consideration? What is the impact of it if we're going to require the developer to go through the expense of conducting that analysis? I assume it's not just to do cartwheels. I assume that there is some utility in the process for this condition to be utilized, that final site plan. That's what I'm trying to...
Yes. Okay, so, let's step back. How did we get this condition? When the master plan was completed with all that community input, it was clear that certain types of retail were preferred, neighborhood goods and services, and also that properties, the buildings have the opportunity to morph as retail would change, office would change, whatever. And so, because the master plan had that preference, when it came to the sketch plan, which had these larger amounts of retail equivalent to Big Box, the way the approval was crafted was, all right, at the time of the master plan, we didn't have a market study. Now, with the sketch plan, the applicant had submitted a market study. It didn't include that one piece of economic feasibility, but it was an avenue for the council to approve the sketch plan that was not consistent with the master plan recommendations. So, that's how we got the condition. And then, in our review at the SDP level, all staff is capable of doing is, was that condition as it's written met by the applicant? And we found that it was not.
But what?
So, the condition does not require demonstration of financial feasibility. It was there, as I said, at sketch plan, that would give the council information at the SDP level to say, okay, maybe that was feasible, maybe it wasn't, depending upon the outcome of what the study said. And it would have been an opportunity to implement phasing. You can't do this until you do that, or some such.
Okay. So, yeah, I understand at the SDP level. And so, assuming we vote tonight to approve this, what is the utility of that condition at its final site plan?
I would say at this point, and like I said, all I can do is review it. At this point, then it would be setting expectations for timing of development.
Okay. Anybody else? Go ahead, Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And one of the reasons that I don't approve, I don't support Rob's motion is I agree with staff that the way that this is written, it isn't requiring approval by staff on the information that's provided. I agree that there is some information that was provided at the sketch plan level that has not been met. You know, I still don't believe we have seen any examples of where two-stacked large-format retail has worked. And I think that is just, you know, an important thing. Again, not that we're going to use that. I think it's important for us going in to make sure that as, you know, I think what you're saying, Rob, is, you know, well, what happens if they find out it's not feasible? It's better to find out that it's not feasible before they put a shovel in the ground there. Then they would have the opportunity to amend their plan and put something else there. That, I think, is the piece that has been missing, and that's why I think it's important to keep that number six in there.
Hold on. I want to give some other people a chance to speak to.
Yeah, so just following up on what Councilman McMichael was saying, but if there's no, like, we can't condition or ask them to change, you know, anything in the plan after it's approved. It's just for information purposes. I mean, they're big boys and girls. They're not going to want to invest in something that doesn't make sense. Seems like a waste of effort to ask them to do something that we can't take any action with, other than to be informed that we can't take any action or change of them. Why not? We're just causing them expense for no action. That's how I read it.
The only pushback I would have to that point is that this was a requirement set out in the sketch plan. If we say, okay, you don't have, in this case, forget about it. You don't have to fulfill that requirement, then we're setting a precedent for future development. When we have sketch plans, what do our conditions mean? Oh, sorry. Lisa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That was my understanding as well from the sketch plan standpoint. And also, if, do we know if they know it's feasible? So, would this show us, show us and the applicant what the feasibility looked like? I think it's a question mark for all of us, what the feasibility is, and maybe including the applicant because we haven't seen it. So, I think that's why we're requesting it.
Neil, you want to jump in on this? You haven't spoken yet.
I haven't. I thought I'd wait my turn. The issue I have with this particular requirement is that basically the staff has asked the applicant to perform a study. The applicant has submitted a study, and the staff doesn't like it. I don't want to end up in a never-ending story here. We don't want to play Bring Me A Rock and don't like the rock, bring me a different rock. So, I don't know when this ends, so I'm a little uncomfortable continuing this as a requirement when, I mean, they were asked to submit something, they submitted something. When is it good enough?
Well, we did say in the staff memo what should be in the financial feasibility, and we've always made it clear. And this is something that is commonly included in a market analysis. It had not been included in what was originally submitted at the sketch plan level or later on as we were working on the SDP.
Rob?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate your patience on this. This is a procedural question for Greg, is that if the study shows the stack two-over-two in residential is not feasible at final site plan, is there an option for the developer to change from that configuration without having to come back to SDP?
It depends. Whatever they come forward with the final site plan would need to be in conformance, again, with the SDP. So, the heights, the densities, the build-to-lines, everything that's established as part of this plan. Now, an SDP is not final site plan, right? So, there is room to refine the plan through the planning commission, right, at final site plan and review. But again, it would need to be in conformance, again, with the plan established, assuming the SDP gets approved tonight and its configuration is shown.
Could they say the retail doesn't work? You know, the stack two-over-two and then housing above, what were we thinking? We need to take that retail out. We want all residential.
The only issue they would run into upon that is the master plan's special conditions as it relates to the amount of single use.
So, that goes all the way back to...
Correct. And that is a special condition of the master plan, so we have to enforce that, right? There's no way around us not enforcing the special condition.
Okay. Thank you. And so, my opinion, appreciate the need for analysis, but it seems like if we are inclined to move forward with the process today, condition number six, the ship has sailed.
Jamil, and then Jim.
In my day job, right, we develop medicines which we submit to the FDA for review. FDA regulatory body, city kind of a regulatory body as well. FDA looks at, is your drug safe? Certification. They don't look at, is your drug going to make money? How's the market going to accept it? So, I think that's where I lean in terms of our purview here. That's on the applicant in terms of doing that, too.
Jim?
Yeah. The only difference here, in my opinion, is that the effect that it has on the full community versus, you know, approval of a drug. To follow up on council member Woo's hypothetical, Greg, would they be able to go from two to one, for example? Because I do think we've seen examples of one floor of Big Box retail with residential on top.
Possibly. Again, it would have to be in conformance with the height requirement, so...
Sure.
But, yes, I mean, again, these are maximum caps, everything. So, again, they can always reduce between SDP and final site plan and still be in conformance with the SDP. Again, assuming the heights, the build-to-lines, all the density still matches up with what's being approved tonight.
Right. So, it's not that there isn't anything that can be done. This information could be informative at final site plan and having to decide that they have to go from two to one because maybe their own numbers then don't support it, and they change their minds. So, I do think that it does provide value that could be informative.
And I would argue they can do their own financial feasibility analysis if they wanted to. The question here is whether we're going to use this as a tool to force them to go from two to one.
I think it's important to remember that this was implemented at sketch plan approval as a way to thread that needle with a proposed development that did not meet the master plan requirements bit by bit. Now, if everyone, and there's been a lot of community input, if everyone is more or less happy with what's proposed and does not feel that we need a mechanism like that to justify consistency between the master plan and what is proposed, then the need for that requirement evaporates. If you feel as though it's important to know about timing and feasibility because of community expectations, say, infrastructure requirements in the immediate area, not necessarily on-site, but there will be issues associated around the neighborhood where there will be city activity and investment such as Russell Avenue. If you feel like it's important to know whether Block C will develop within X number of years, then this is a mechanism that provides for that. But as far as, you know, what will a developer do? If it's not financially feasible, they're not going to build it. You don't know when they'll decide not to build it. If it is feasible, they'll build it.
I get that. Thank you. So, Lisa, and then we're going to take a vote on this.
Sharon just answered the question I was going to ask, so thank you. About how did we get here because of the sketch plan, what we said at sketch? So, thank you.
And it was what we said at sketch because of inconsistency with the master plan, right? So, this was a tool offered to allow them to show, okay, you said this at master plan. We believe we can do something different. And we said, okay, help us understand that. That's how we got here.
All right. So, we have, so we're going to vote on the amendment first. The amendment would be to remove condition six. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay. Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, that, so it carries three-two. So, we're gonna, your motion to approve the SDP is now amended to remove condition six, and now we will have the vote on the SDP. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Carries five-zero. The SDP is approved. Now, we're going to go to the environmental waiver. Let me just pull up that page.
Not to be anticlimactic, Mr. Mayor, but I think we actually approved it on the first vote.
It was just a motion.
Yeah, we approved, moved to approve the resolution as amended.
The waiver is a different...
No, because he took the two votes. I don't think the second vote was...
Belt and suspenders.
I just want to make sure procedurally we're correct.
We voted on the amendment, and then we voted on the resolution.
And then the waiver is a separate document.
Yeah.
How would you have done it differently?
So, I moved to approve the resolution as amended to strike condition six, which when voted in affirmative was an affirmative vote on the resolution. And so, the second vote, I just want to make sure when you're moving to approve the resolution, it's not confused as the original resolution, because I think it passed on the first try.
Frank? So, point of wonder, the mayor, when he called the vote, called to strike six from it. So, the motion that the mayor acted on, whether it was the way that you specifically worded it, when the mayor called the vote, he said whether we were going to strike that, which is what we voted on.
So, Neil had made the motion to approve the SDP.
And then I moved to amend. Yep.
You moved to amend the conditions. And, but you're not moving the SDP again. He's already moved the SDP. Your amendment was about the conditions.
Frank, we're clear?
Yes. That was the SDP resolution. It was properly amended, and you voted the, replaced the resolution as replaced by the amendment. Now, you're moving on to the second resolution.
As long as Frank is clear, I'm clear.
You good? Okay. So, now we're on page 1307, I think, and this is the environmental waiver. What is the pleasure of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the resolution, Mayor and City Council approving a waiver of the environmental standards for development regulation for the former Lake Forest Mall property, SDP 9736, 2024.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, that carries unanimously. Okay. So, the SDP and the environmental waiver are passed.
Just to clarify, I believe you said ENV 9736. It should be 9737, just to clarify for the record.
Oh, there's actually a typo in...
Yeah, it says 9736 in the...
There's a typo in the background material then, because one of them does say 9737, but...
I apologize for that. For the record, it's ENV 9737-2024.
Okay.
Aye.
That was the intent of the council. Okay. Next, we're going to go to our public hearing. And Frank?
And now for something completely different. Good evening. This is a public hearing on what I will call the Development Rights and Responsibilities Agreement that's submitted by Kevin Rogers of Lake Forest Development LLC, and which was accepted by you, Mayor and City Council, during a regular meeting on June 17, 2024. We will refer to that as the DRRRA, I'm sure, as we go forward. By way of introduction, some of the procedural steps, notice of this public hearing was published in the Washington Post, I believe our last newspaper of general circulation in the city on September 12 and 19, and with the first appearance at least 14 days prior to tonight's public hearing as required. At the present time, there are nine exhibits in the record file. Any individual exhibits may... Any individual exhibits may be reviewed during regular business hours at City Hall. Any objection to the receipt of any exhibit should be noted prior to the closing of the record, otherwise they will be deemed received in evidence. At the conclusion of this public hearing, staff will recommend, as an FYI, that the Mayor and City Council move to close the record on this DRRRA and its adoption at 5:00 PM on October 4th, 2024, with policy discussion and potential final action tentatively scheduled then for October 14th, 2024. And just by way of very general introduction, and then I will turn, I will happily turn it over to Gary. The DRRRA is intended to serve as an agreement essentially balancing some additional certainty and stability to developers, and certainly for a project of this size, while allowing the city at the same time to negotiate enhanced public benefits in exchange for that. And enhanced is the key. It's public benefits beyond what would normally happen through the land development process. So in exchange for those two elements, some certainty and enhanced public benefits, that will mean existing development and building-related laws stay in place for purposes of this project without the risk of future changes. The vesting rule, late vesting in Maryland will not have the same impact as it otherwise would. And there are four distinct enhanced public benefits offered tonight by the draft that is subject to this public hearing, and I am going to let Gary talk about those details and certainly if there are any questions as we move forward, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Frank. Gary, welcome.
So, good evening. Gary Unterberg with Rogers Consulting, and I'm going to turn it over.
I hate to disappoint, but Gary can't even spell DRRRA.
I'm here for support, so, but I'll turn it over.
Welcome, Bob.
Thank you. For the record, Bob Delrimple with the law firm, Mcelzer-Gervich. Kevin Rogers with WRS is here as is a large representation of the development team that's worked very hard for the last several years on this project. I'm going to move pretty quickly through our presentation and then just answer any questions that you have. But before I launch into that, I did want to thank you for calling this special session tonight as an accommodation to us. I think it's appropriate and somewhat symbolic because special session for a special project. I agree with all of the comments that I heard. This truly is a special night, I think, for the, for the city. If you'll indulge me for just one second on a, on a personal basis, I grew up, well, I haven't grown up yet, but I was brought up in this area. And, and I saw the changes from the time I was a little baby till now, and I saw the cycle of Lake Forest Mall. I was not 11, I was 18, so, much older. But I know how important it's been to the, to the community and to those of us who have been in this area for a long time. Not only is the, the project unprecedented for the city, but the, the DRRRA is also unprecedented. This is, this is a first for the city. There aren't many jurisdictions in Maryland that have had the courage to entertain this or to try to understand how it can be a useful tool. And I really appreciate that you all took the time, you had an open mind about it, and that we collectively came to a decision that a DRRRA was, was not only right but necessary for this project. We would encourage you to authorize the staff to execute that, or you approve it, or whatever the verbiage is for, for this to get final action. The way it is drafted right now and the way it is before you right now, it's my understanding is we are in complete agreement with the staff on the DRRRA, and my client is prepared to sign it as it is in print tonight. So we would encourage you to allow that to happen. Gary, next one. Vanna Unterberg over there. The project that you just approved will create several thousands of jobs and a lot of revenue for not just the city but for this area in general, projected to be around $1.7 billion annually. We appreciate that the condition six in the previous discussion was taken out, and the reason is because we want to celebrate this. We don't want doubts being out there in the marketplace as to whether this is a financially viable project or not. It is financially viable, and it is going to do all of the things, all of the great things that are reflected on this chart. Several thousands of temporary and permanent jobs and, and a lot of revenue, as I indicated. Gary? Just to summarize what was just approved, 1,600 residential units with multiple dwelling unit types at multiple levels of affordability. I was listening to WTOP on the way over here, and they, there was a story about attainable housing in Montgomery County, and all they do is talk about it, they don't deliver it. And we're here tonight as mutually to say, oh, yeah, we can deliver it, and we will. The project will also have 750,000 square feet of employment uses, a quarter of a million square feet of large format retail, similar amount, a little bit less maybe of neighborhood commercial use, a new Montgomery County Transit Center, and ample project and public amenities, open spaces. And importantly, I think it'll bring connectivity north, south, east, and west of this site in a, in a way that is desperately needed. So getting back to the basics, what is a DRRRA and why is it necessary for this project? And I won't spend a lot of time on this, but we look at the DRA as a way to connect the dots. It's what is taking a very large project on a very large site, and it's a very complex project, and, and it's going to take a while to, to build it out. But it gives us the assurances right up front that as entitled, this project can get built to its completion. And why is that necessary? Because this is a late vesting state, as, as you're well aware, and that's a real economic development burden for a project such as this. So with the DRRRA, it allows both the public and the private to have the assurances that this project's going to move forward, and it's going to move forward under a known set of circumstances and laws. The, the trade-off here for the developer, what they're gaining by this, by this contract, and it is a contract between the developer and the city, contracts in zoning are typically not allowed in the state of Maryland, and this was legislated into being for that very reason, because in this instance, contract zoning is, is not only appropriate but necessary. It, it addresses the late vesting by vesting this project right up front and freezing the laws. So when we're asking, you know, lenders to, and equity and debt partners, and most, most importantly, tenants to come to this site, they, they know exactly what the rules are going forward. There's, there's very little uncertainty left in terms of, you know, what are the rules for this moving forward? In return for that, the public gets enhanced public benefits. And those are enhanced public benefits, those are public benefits that would not otherwise be attainable through the typical entitlement process. So it truly is a win-win for, for the public and private sectors. When it went to the planning commission, they had two necessary findings that they needed to make. One was consistency with the master plan, which they found, and the other was that there are enhanced public benefits that warrant the approval of the DRRRA. So both of those findings have been made. So I think it's, it's teed up for you perfectly with no disagreements as to what should be in the document. Gary? The, when we first filed the DRRRA, we listed out what we considered to be the enhanced public benefits. And we made a point at that point in time, the, the greatest enhanced public benefit of all is the delivery of the project. And the delivery of the project would have been very challenging without having a DRRRA in place. So let's not lose sight of the fact that that's, that's the golden goose right there. The project is going to go forward, and it's going to go forward with the, with the benefit of the DRRRA. We listed several other public benefits that we thought should be in the document. They're all on the screen there. We still believe that these are, these are public benefits. Some of them got negotiated in different ways. We really don't need to, I don't think, spend a lot of time on, on what was originally put in. Gary? I think let's just cut to the chase of what's in there. And these are enhanced public benefits that your staff and, and the developer agree are necessary, are important, and are in addition to what the city would have otherwise achieved through the entitlement process. So there is to be a discounted transit center, which will assist the county in, in being able to deliver on a new transit center on the opposite side of where the transit center is now, which I think we, we all agree is the, the right, right thing to do. There's additional open space in A Forest Station, as, was, was outlined also in the SDP process. There's a public art contribution of a quarter of a million dollars, and there's a financial contribution of almost $5 million that will be paid in five installments over the earlier years of the DRRRA. The only one that, I think they're fairly self-explanatory, the only one I want to comment on further is the financial contribution, because that kind of came towards the end of it. It came at the initiative of staff, who I think were acting on behalf of what they heard from this body here. And at first, we, we didn't like it, because we had put forward what we thought was an important enhanced public benefit in the form of subsidized civic space. This does not preclude that from happening. The $4.65 million could be spent on that, if that's what you choose. But I just want to make it clear that how the city decides to spend that money is between the city and the public. WRS is, does not have a say-so in that any longer. They, they are required to write the check, but they have no requirement to tell you or to even recommend, well, we might recommend. We, we do have opinions, if you haven't noticed. But I think that's a substantial sum of money that allows you to do public good in ways that in your discretion and, and listening to the public, that you decide should, should be done. So we are, we're satisfied that the, that the, the final package of, next, Gary, that the final package of the enhanced public benefits is, is worthy of, of your approval and execution by both parties. I'm going to end by, I guess, just saying, you know, sometimes a picture is worth a thousand words. The bottom picture, maybe it was purposely by Gary uglified a little bit by putting it in black and white, but nevertheless, it tells the story. There was a successful mall there for a bunch of years. Surface parking, which was in vogue when it was built, stormwater management, as was also vogue for the times. Through the DRRRA, giving us the assurances that this project can get built from beginning to end without interference, we can deliver the picture on the top. And I don't, I would question whether anybody with a sound mind could look at these two and not very quickly say which one is better. So we are, we're thankful to, to this body for hanging in there with us. There's been a lot of discussion, a lot of back and forth, maybe, maybe some shouting every now and then, who knows? But we're, we're very pleased and proud to be before you tonight, asking you to sign the DRA, and let's get this thing going.
Thank you very much. Gary, was there anything else you wanted to add here?
Thank, thank you very much.
Okay. I wasn't digging for...
That concludes our...
Okay. Do we have any questions or comments? Jamil, please.
A few comments and a question. First, thank you to staff and applicant on the back and forth, and this has been, you know, interesting to see it evolve from its origins to where it is now. Frank, a question for, for you on, on the DRA. In the event, hopefully unlikely event, that the applicant was foreclosed upon or declared bankruptcy, what is the operation on the DRA? What happens to it?
Right. Both foreclosure and bankruptcy can be, can be ways to address debt. In foreclosure, other debt obligations, let's say, a primary mortgage company moves forward, that can be a way to eliminate at least simple payment of debts. The thing is, though, the DRRRA, well, I'll actually touch on the bankruptcies, too. Bankruptcies are focused on removing personal debt, not so much land, land rights or, shall we say, loans like mortgages that, that are secured by the land. I was looking for the right word there. So because of that, and because of the presence of the involvement with the land, running with the land, involving land rights and multiple future development actions, that means that any, if there was a foreclosure or even a bankruptcy, the impact would be limited. There may be a timing interference, yes. In other words, bankruptcy, there is an automatic stay, and that's going to limit some actions the city would normally be able to take. But the city, in addition to the DRRRA itself, the city remains the land use regulator, and the enforcement steps that have been built in, development approvals, permit issuance, and applications of laws that are in place, all of those, if there was a foreclosure and, say, in the case of a foreclosure, the new successor came forward and didn't follow through, it would be the same violation and very similar impact in terms of bankruptcy as well.
Excellent, thank you. Look forward to hearing from the public.
Okay, Neil?
So, just to make, just as we like to say, for the benefit of the public, the, the benefit to the developer here is, has been described as, in technical terms, as, as protection from the state's late vesting laws. And just, and I'm going to give a quick summary, and, and one of the attorneys can correct me if I get any of the details wrong, but basically what that means is if we change the zoning laws before something is built, ordinarily, they would have to follow the new, the new improved zoning laws, and that gives them less certainty and gives their banks a little bit of heartburn. So this, here, see the heads nodding, so I didn't mess it up too badly. So basically, that's the benefit that the developer is getting in return for the enhanced public benefits that they've proffered here. We've gone back and forth with them, staff has gone back and forth quite a bit, and council had a chance to chime in, and I think we've gotten a, a fair, a fair balance of benefits for both parties, and I support the DRA as it's currently drafted.
All right. Not seeing any other hands, I think it's time to go to the public, right? Okay. Well, this is the time, Mayor and Council like to hear from anybody who'd like to testify on this matter. We ask that you state your name and address or neighborhood for the record. Keep your comments in no more than three minutes, and if you have more than three minutes worth of material to deliver, use your three minutes and submit the rest in writing. Do we have, oh, we do? Please.
I'm ready.
Go right ahead.
You're ready?
Go right ahead, we're ready.
My name is Spence Limbacher. I'm the, the Chair of Gaithersburg Beloved Community at Asbury Methodist Village. In June, we brought a number, a large number of people here to testify on the SDP plan around, particularly around affordable housing, increased recreation for families and youth, and increasing three, increase in number of three-bedroom housing units, and our general support for the development plan as it was put forward. We've continued to follow the changes made in the development plan and continue to be concerned with the city not supporting an increase in affordable housing. We've been over that, and we understand that the 15% is, is what you've agreed to, and that, that, we're happy with that. We were also pleased that the council was able to get the developer to increase the number of three-bedroom units in, in the development, which we felt was very important for larger families. For this, this hearing on enhanced public benefits, we again brought a number of people, several who will, who will testify around the specific pieces you just talked about up here. Our position is, or what we would like to propose, is the city should use the developer's financial money that they're going to contribute to, to the city, to continue to subsidize homeownership and increase the housing affordability on the development. And that, we feel, will be, you know, will push the affordability of, of many of those units. We also understand, although it wasn't, wasn't talked about here, but in our conversation with Mr. Rogers, is that there's, there's still, or we think there's a 30,000, up to a 30,000 square foot building the developer will provide for recreation purposes. building the developer will provide for recreation purposes. There has not been much talked about that, but I think that, is that still on the table?
Spence, I need you to address us.
I'm sorry, okay.
Thank you.
If that is so on the table. We have been working with the county about, because they're interested in building a recreation center. This afternoon, we met with the county executive, with a number of other groups, and asked him if he would meet with the mayor, yourself, and WRS, to talk about the possibility of using that 30,000 square foot building, you know, with the county, on a family recreation center. He was very interested. He did not know much about that and was very interested in that and said yes. So, Mr. Mayor, I hope you would agree to meet with him, and that, we will follow up on that. We also will continue to push the developer to work with HOC to provide more affordable housing on the site, if those things can come through. We feel very strongly about that. And we will continue to, you know, keep an eye on this and come back and testify as the other pieces are put in place, and so, thank you. And we have a few people that are going to talk about similar things.
Okay. Let me just respond to the recreational center idea. As part of what we just approved, there is, as you said, there are, there's a 30,000 square foot building that can't, that is designated for civic use. Right now, as of this approval, this is between, if the county wants to engage WRS in a discussion to use that facility for recreational center, they can. I'm happy to be part of the conversation, but I don't need to be. It is, it's really between the county and WRS.
Well, I think it's important that you're part of that, too, because it's, yeah.
I have, I'm happy to be part of it. It's not important legally, but it's, but, but yes, okay, thank you.
And we will follow up with all three parties on that.
Okay, great. Who'd like to testify next?
Hello.
Hello.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Juwan Robinson. I live in Montgomery Village. I attend Walker's Mill High School. I'm in grade 11, and I play, I play, I'm captain for Walker's Mill football team. And I am part of the 4D club. I think the community needs a rec center in the public spacing, because we need a safe space for young and elderly people to go. It will help us build a better community for now and the future. I've seen a lot of kids younger than me have nowhere to go when their parents have to work late, and it's just not safe for any kid of any age to be out that late. A rec center, a rec center easily accessible to Montgomery Village, can't change that. That's all.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Who'd like to be our next? Please.
Good evening. Jeanette Rosenbaum, Chair of the Environmental Affairs Committee, resident of the Lake Forest Neighborhood. I want to comment on this idea of freezing the development rules for the lifespan of the project. We know that this project will take 20 to 30 years to construct. The world is going to change in 20 to 30 years. Everything is going to change, and no one is ready for it. If we are still constructing a project in 2050 under 2024 rules, I think we are going to regret it. If we are going to freeze the rules for this project, we need to at least attempt to project ourselves forward to what will be considered acceptable development practices in 2050. On the subject of the enhanced public benefits, I am not the only one who has commented that this project looks like an attempt to extract nonexistent wealth from the Lake Forest Neighborhood. The developer is offering to contribute millions of dollars for civic uses. I'm foreseeing a situation where those dollars get spent on the west side of town. I would love if the council would commit to spending those dollars on the east side. Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi, good evening. My name is Damascus Gorm. How are you guys doing today?
All right, great. Please, go ahead.
I go to Walker's Mill High School, and I'm one of the team captains. I'm a resident of Montgomery Village, and when I think about, like, what Montgomery Village needs, I feel like the public civil space should be used as a rec center. And the reason I feel that is because I did a mentorship with the Montgomery Village Chiefs Program, and I feel like the connection I made with those kids was like, just like something I can't even talk about. And I feel like all kids would need that, not just kids who, like, are interested in playing sports, and like, yeah. And like, sorry. And another reason, I feel like Montgomery Village would be a great idea, or a rec center would be a great idea in Montgomery Village, is because Montgomery Village has, like, you know, a poverty problem, and I feel like some families don't have the resources to put their kids in, like, certain, like, daycares and stuff, and I feel like, especially, like, the younger kids, they need around, they need to be around people who are good for them. And yeah, that's it, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Carmen Castro Conroy. I'm a long-term resident of the city of Gathersburg, and I also happen to be a certified housing counselor. I work for a hard-approved housing counseling agency that serves city residents and Montgomery County residents. I interact with city residents on a daily basis. Unfortunately, they come to us when they have trouble paying the rent or their mortgage, because there is no affordable housing in the city. I'm talking about people that are making less than 50% of the area median income, and tonight, I heard beautiful things about the Lake Forest development, and I'm very happy that this is happening, but I think the development left out a good number of city residents that make less than 50% of area median income, renters and homeowners. They have the right to live in the city and to have decent and affordable housing. They're not going to be part of this development, unfortunately. I want the city to take that into account in the way that any money that may be available through this project could be used towards helping that population, that are primarily seniors, retired people making minimum wage, $15 an hour, even $20, $25 an hour, cannot support a family and pay rent in the city. We have families that call our line every day. They're struggling, they're at risk of becoming homeless, facing eviction, can't pay their mortgage, can't pay their rent. We hear families paying 80% of their incomes towards rent. They cannot make it. They're at risk, and there's nothing that we can do about it. We tell them, is there anywhere you can find, like, a more affordable housing? It's not available in the city. It's not available in Montgomery County. They have to pair with other families, they have to share bedrooms in small apartments, and that's what was happening. I'm speaking on their behalf, because I hear from them every day. So whatever you can do for the seniors, for the people that rely on disability income, please take them into account. Thank you.
Thank you. Who'd like to be the next to testify?
My name is Michael A.C. Fianco. I currently attend Walker's Mill High School. I'm in the 11th grade. I come here to talk to you about adding suggestion for, like, the space. I think we should add a rec center to help out the community. There was a little incident that happened around, around South Valley Park. It was a football game against, with the youth. I was a part of the 4D club and mentorship, so I had a connection with the kids. I was deeply saddened to hear about the shooting that happened over there, and I honestly think having a rec center could really decrease the crime rate and also, like, help out with the kids and help out with the community. Maybe having this rec center could also open up programs for people. This could also benefit, could benefit a lot of people. Having a rec center could also, like, open up connections for people who might be looking for a job or, like, an opportunity to help out in the community, and this rec center could really be it. The place is very convenient, as transportation is very easy and efficient. Maybe people can just take one bus and get right, exactly right there to the rec center, if you guys take it into account. And what's it called? I'm sorry. Like, having a rec center could also, like, keep the youth out of trouble and, like, keep them in the community and to, like, stay away from, like, the people that could, like, corrupt them, and basically, everything. And also, like, schools also connect with, like, the rec center to, like, also build up opportunities and, like, to help out with the community, and it also helps the students in that community, too. But I also, like, just leave, just leave y'all with something, you know? In Montgomery Village, there's not really a rec center, and for me, I also look for opportunities to come, like, help out, try and be a part of the community, and it's not really that much to help out, and it kind of sucks. And also, like, you know, we are assumed to also be, like, a future of this community, and I also, like, would like something to, like, help us, like, move forward in the community and help build it and grow it and, like, help it expand. So this is pretty much all. I hope you take it into account, building a rec center in that space, but that's pretty much it. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rosemary Marina. I live in Sidemen, and I'm a part of Safe Space, Safe Places Resident Association. As all the youth have said, and also Spence mentioned about the rec center at Lake Forest Mall, as a person who has lived in Sidemen for quite some time, Lake Forest was the only place we could hang out with our children, the place where they could play. So when we heard about 30,000 square feet of a community rec center at Lake Forest, we decided to visit the Plum, the Plum Gas Center, which is along there, run by the county, it's along the 355 road going to Germantown. We thinking of what could 30,000 square feet look like if we have a rec center. We decided to take the children with us. They are about five to six teenagers and five or eight, between eight and nine-year-old children. When we arrived there, the kids were so much excited, they jumped and started playing while we were there touring the place, and they were, they didn't want, they did not want to go home. So as parents, and myself as a parent, I realized how much I deprived the children the chance of a place to play, which was close, as it was to be Lake Forest Mall. So with this, we really request, as Spence has mentioned, that we had a meeting in the afternoon with the council, county executive, so your availability. If you give us your availability, we'll work with them to ensure that that meeting happens, as well as the presence of the developer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. For the record, my name is Leon. I work for Housing Initiative Partnership. So looking at this project, it's really beautiful. Thank you all. Just so thank. But however, on my, for my work, I am at court every Wednesdays and Fridays, so I've been seeing countless city of Gathersburg residents facing eviction. I was hoping coming here tonight to see, this will be a chance for what the county hasn't done. The city will take this chance to be able to help those who are, like, struggling to live in this county and to thrive. Please just take this chance and then do what the county hasn't done. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Good evening. David Mullins. I live at the Gateway Apartments here in Gathersburg, and I'm realizing this is my first time at this chamber, is talking to y'all. This is interesting. I just wasn't planning on commenting, but I wanted to just second a couple of things I heard from colleagues here at HIP, working at Renters Alliance. We would have to agree that, you know, what we're seeing on the ground is really troubling at times, and so any way that there can be further subsidies, that there can be streamlining of additional subsidies through existing programs, existing partners, I heard HOC mention, and we, whatever the city can do to help streamline that, please do, because it, you know, MPDUs are great for a lot of people, but, but yeah, there are, we're just meeting a lot of people that fall well below that threshold. And then I like to read cases, just, and, so I read the one that was mentioned in the agreement, one of them, the Clean Water Lingor v Frederick County, Maryland, and it said in there that the, this freeze period that our EAC chair brought up, I just was already kind of curious about it, too. It says that the freeze period is typically coincides with the build-out period. I didn't look, I didn't read the whole agreement, because, I'm sorry, I'm not gonna, but in the cover letter, I still look, it was 25 years is the freeze period? So I came away kind of curious, yeah, how that is, especially since this lawsuit, it came about, because it was allegedly overly broad. So more just from an objective kind of legal standpoint, I'm wondering how 25 years fits into that and everything. It's just an interesting thought, I was just wondering. But, yeah, and then I just want to echo what we heard about the public space. Again, I didn't read the whole agreement, but it looks like a lot of it is substantially discounted or, you know, civic use, too. And so, again, whether it's the county, I'm hearing great ideas, or the city, or, again, the city just, you know, over facilitating, just really trying to make it happen, I just, I really want to echo what I heard tonight, because, you know, we do a lot of work at Sidemen, we're privileged to, it's good to know the residents there, and we just would love to see more for them. So, thanks for your time.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else in the room who wants to testify? Come on up.
Happy Thursday and Me Month, everyone. Me Month is my month, because it's my birthday. My name is Janita Thomas. I am a resident of Montgomery Village. I've pretty much grown up here my whole entire life. I have seen the changes in Lake Forest, I have seen the changes within the community that surrounds, not just Lake Forest, but all around in Gathersburg, Rockville, Germantown, Montgomery Village. My main concern, I currently am a community manager at a leasing, in a leasing office. There is a huge, huge, huge problem with people not being able to afford to live in this area. I know, you know, like, the owner of the complex, for instance, you know, it's Montgomery County. It is Montgomery County, but it's not Potomac, it's not, you know, the rich ends of Montgomery County. People cannot afford it at all. So that is a huge concern, that people are not making enough money. All of these new developments and stuff are being built, but it's not significant for the families that are here. We do have a lot of families that do live in some of these two-bedroom apartments, and it's probably like eight people in a unit, and they're just basically overcrowding each other. There's just not enough. So that is a huge concern of mine that I see every day, and it's very heartbreaking, you know, when someone can't afford it, they lose their jobs, or, you know, other things of that nature. So I just wanted to pick on that really quick. I'm not sure if everyone realizes that it's not affordable. And the HOC program, I heard that that was mentioned, they're very overwhelmed. I don't know, you know, if more jobs or something like that can be created there, because I work hand-in-hand with them as well throughout the day, and I don't know if something else can be helped with that aspect of it. I just heard it mentioned, that's why I'm saying it. But just to go real quick, I talk a lot. So I would also like to piggyback off of the youth that was speaking earlier. There has been an influx of violence that has been happening, and I grew up in the 90s, and I spent a lot of my time growing up in DC, and there wasn't this type of violence in this area at all. It was like a safe place to say. I was there when the shooting took place. they lose their jobs, or, you know, other things of that nature. So I just wanted to pick on that really quick. I'm not sure if everyone realizes that it's not affordable. And the HOC program, I heard that that was mentioned. They're very overwhelmed. I don't know, you know, if more jobs or something like that can be created there, because I work hand-in-hand with them as well throughout the day. And I don't know if something else can be helped with that aspect of it. I just heard it mentioned. That's why I'm saying it. But just to go real quick, I talk a lot. So I would also like to piggyback off of the youth that was speaking earlier. There has been an influx of violence that has been happening. And I grew up in the 90s, and I spent a lot of my time growing up in DC. And there wasn't this type of violence in this area at all. It was like a safe place to say. I was there when the shooting took place, and everyone that was older was kind of shocked, like, it was happening. Like, we know it could happen, but it was just more of a shock, and no one knew what to do. You know, we have no evacuation for any of that, because it doesn't happen. I hear the beeping. I guess I better hurry up.
You've got 30 more to say.
Okay. So I would like to say that if we could use that space for a rec center for these children, so that it's more safe for them, that would be great. It would also give them things to do. It would help with the mentorships that we have around, that we're trying to create a space for them to be safe, so that they can be children. They are the future of this area. So that would be something good, to see other people around them with good leadership, to help them out with those types of things.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I just, I just want to remind everybody, particularly when we have people that are testifying, I need everybody to be respectful. We're hearing conversations go on. Please, if you have any private conversations, just take them outside the room, because we want to give everybody our full attention, please.
My name is Hal Garman. I live at Diamond on the Asbury Methodist Village. Been there for 14 years with my wife, Janet. And I am the founder of the GBCI Bubble Community Project. And what I have to suggest or to ask for is very simple. There's some money coming across. We heard at first it was $6.5 million, and I think the document today says 4.65. We would like to see that go into making affordable housing in addition to all the other things, because as you've heard, there's just not enough affordable housing. And there are hundreds of people that work at Asbury, for example, that would love to be able to, some of them would love to be able to live closer to where they work, and they can't afford the expensive stuff. The 30,000 square foot building, we're very hopeful that you will be able to work out something so that can be a recreation center for all people. And that you can work it out with the county, because we understand that they have the money to do it. And we hope that the developer will continue working with HOC to provide more affordable housing on the site. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor and City of Gatorsburg Council members. My name is Emily Dematatis, and I am a community school youth on at South Lake Elementary. I've had the privilege of working with the South Lake community for 11 years. Part of my role is to listen to the community, to build relationships, and gather voice data about the needs and assets of the community. Another aspect of my role is building the capacity of our parents and caregivers with, to advocate for the needs of the community and to work with the community to advocate for those needs so that our community can thrive. Tonight, I am asking the City of Gatorsburg to help the Montgomery Village and Gatorsburg community to thrive by using the 30,000 square feet building that the developer will provide as a family recreation center and to also, as other community members have mentioned, to consider the needs for more affordable housing, as that has been a huge concern for many South Lake families. Throughout the time of working with the South Lake community, I have witnessed how incredibly resilient, hardworking, caring, diverse, and engaged the community is. And yet I have also witnessed how much systemic inequities harm students and their families. One significant challenge for our families is the lack of free spaces to play and engage in positive youth development. Although our school and many of the schools in our area offer after-school programs and family engagement activities, our families could use an additional free space to build connections and enjoy activities together. Our schools and other organizations try to fill the gap and are trying our best, but the lack of free space is often a barrier for youth and their families. Tomorrow, I, along with other students and staff members from the Walkers Mill Cluster Schools, will be touring different recreation centers with Joe Hooks and the 480 Club. This is an opportunity for students to envision what a potential recreation center could look like as a free place to engage in activities, as that is something that has been brought up time and time again. This is an opportunity to listen to kids and youth, as we just heard, and to ensure as adults that we do everything in our power to meet their needs. The Lake Forest Mall redevelopment project is a wonderful opportunity to unite our community and provide equitable access to opportunities like affordable housing and a recreation center. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else who'd like to testify here in the room? Not seeing anybody? Okay, let me just make a call over to those joining us on Zoom. If there's anybody on Zoom who'd like to testify, use the Zoom raise hand function, and I will call on you. Is there anybody on Zoom who'd like to testify? So far, not seeing anybody. Couple more seconds? Okay. I'm not seeing anybody. Okay. Well, we thank everyone for their testimony. I will, I already interacted a little bit when it came to the idea of the rec center. There is, we have, as a city, in working with the applicant on this plan, we have essentially negotiated through our master plan process and our sketch plan, and now the schematic development plan, that there is this building. But it is incumbent on, and we've actually reached out to county council members, particularly Dawn Lukey and Councilmember Lorian Sales. I have not talked directly, well, I had one exchange with Mark Elrich, our county executive, months ago. He probably doesn't remember, but it wasn't, it was not like a serious conversation about this. But Dawn, Councilmember Lukey, and Councilmember Sales are well aware of what we have here, the opportunity. And it really is, I'm happy to be part of any conversations, but it's really incumbent upon the county to take the conversation up and approach WRS and work with them on providing that service, if they believe that that's what they need. And clearly, we're hearing that they do. So we appreciate all the testimony and all the involvement on Lake Forest in general. Is there, are there any follow-up questions or comments on the DRA while we're here? Or are we ready to do the record, the record closing motion?
I'll just say, Mr. Mayor, it just, it struck me during the conversation, and really throughout all the testimony and things that we've been hearing since the end of COVID, just this yearning for community with our youth, with our people looking for a new senior center, people just looking for opportunities to get together, to be together, to do things together. And it just, I'm excited for the opportunities that Lake Forest will bring, not just at a center, but just in general, bringing this community back together in a space that they used to be able to come back together.
That's a nice sentiment. I appreciate that. Anyone else? Otherwise, I will tell, I will.
I like that.
Okay. Staff recommends that the mayor and council hold the record open on the, this is on the DRA until 5:00 PM on October 4th, with anticipated policy discussion and final action on Monday, October 14th. What is the pleasure of the council?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, that carries unanimously. And the record will be open until October 4th. So anybody who wants to submit testimony, we're glad to receive it, and it will be considered just like oral testimony tonight. Our next, we have a work session coming up on Monday. Just look up the date here, so I get it right. Monday is September 30th, 7:30 PM here in this room. And then the next regular meeting of the mayor and council will be on Monday, October 7th, here in this room. And until next time, let's do, first, one more time, congratulations to everybody on, this is a really momentous occasion. Congratulations. And until next time, let's do great things, Gatorsburg. We are adjourned.